All right, this is uh. Bringing the meeting to order. Uh, there's a new chair Neil Turner, hopefully I do this all correctly today. This is my first one and with the public, so I will improve as I go along for the rest of this year. Um, at this point in time, uh, we'll call to order and we will start the fags.
Glandly. United States of America. And. One nation. And.
This time we will take a roll call. I'm Neil, I'm president. Thomas?
Present.
All right, uh, is Michael here? I believe he had, he has a thing going on tonight, so he's not going to attend. Wana, are you here?
Present.
Awesome, yay! All right, and then Grant is not going to be in attendance at the start.
At this point, yes.
All right. Sounds good, so we have completed our roll call and we have a quorum. And the first item on our agenda will be the capital projects fund balance extension for public comment.
And it looks like.
We have any public comment?
Well, let's go ahead.
I'm just gonna give a quick few minutes so they know what they're public commenting on. Um, but they, this is so we're able to purchase the items that were approved at the last meeting. Enter calm and.
Class.
And yes, classroom amplification system. Um, so we can only spend up to our budget capacity, so we are adding some capacity um, to our budget of just over one million. And so our fund balance and revenues will still be enough to cover our capital projects, capital projects fund expenditures. And these aren't for new things, they're things that have already been approved. We just need the capacity just spent.
Thank you, Jill.
Any questions?
I have none.
Now someone asked for comments.
We have any comments, what comments? Anyone online?
Given a couple. Okay. At least thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay.
All right.
All right. Then the next item on our agenda is public input. Does anybody in the public like to have input regarding items that are on the agenda tonight? Okay, we're good online also. We have to wait thirty seconds. Okay. All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion?
Okay, so we have a first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Anna. Is there any discussion? If not, uh, I will move to a vote. Ready, Anna? You like to vote?
Yes.
Okay. No moves, it's like, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Next we'll move on to reports. And this time, uh, we do not have our student, uh. Our student reps, our board reps are not in attendance tonight. So we will move on to athletic reports.
Kevin Jerick, our athletic director from the high school and middle school is going to share with us um, a little bit about what's been happening over the past few months.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So this is the, uh, the middle school winter athletic report, and since I reported last time, we have finished two seasons, uh, season two and season three. Um, season two consists of wrestling and girls' basketball, and I tried to give you some numbers so you can get some perspective as to the kids that are, uh, the numbers of kids that are turning out. So, so this year we had thirty-two wrestlers, four were girls, uh, twenty-eight boys. Um, and there's additional nineteen, uh, athletes compared to last year at this time. And some of these numbers for the indoor winter sports, we, we need to take into consideration that that last year we were under some of the COVID band-aids and and, um, you know, some of the testing protocols, it wasn't everybody's favorite. And I think that that impacted numbers from last year, but, but the, the numbers are encouraging. Um, plus the wrestling numbers, uh, we, we did add sixth grade this year to help with our numbers. Um, and I, I did a little bit of, uh, data mining and, and so of the wrestlers, sixteen of the wrestlers this year are multi-sport athletes. Um, basketball, uh, we had thirty-three girls this year, um, added nine compared to last year. And thirty of those uh, individuals are multi-sport athletes. And understand too that there, there's going to be some crossover, there's you see, you see quite a few basketball players. There are also volleyball players, um, which, you know, which makes complete sense. A lot of them go into track, track and field too. And that's kind of the neat thing about the middle school, the way our league has it spread out, because it allows for, um, the middle level to participate in, in as many of the sports that they can, because they're spaced out such that they have the opportunity to do that. Um, and I think that that's a really good experience. Um, season three, boys' basketball, we just finished and we had forty-six boys, which is an increase of six from last year, twenty-six of those individuals are multi-sport athletes. Um, what I would say about those, those two seasons, if if you think about the definition of, of success and you compare it to a win-loss record, um, um, some may say that they fell short of that, but when I think about success in athletics, when you see kids that are having fun and they're engaged and, and you can see growth throughout the season, um, that to me really defines success, and that's what was happening in those programs this year. So, and that's exactly what should be happening, in my opinion, at the middle level. Um, so we just began, we're on day one, two, three. This is day four practice for season four, which is volleyball and boys' soccer. And so we have sixty girls out. Um, it makes that gym look really small, Todd. Uh, which is an additional seventeen compared to last year, forty-three are multi-sport athletes. Um, boys' soccer, we have forty-three out, um, that's plus nineteen compared to last year, and twenty-three of those are multi-sport athletes. And so we'll see, we'll see what they do in, uh, season four, but I was down there the other day and I'll tell you what, I, you know, day one, you know, the girls are running around and, and getting some conditioning in. Day one, they're all happy and giggly and, you know, and I'm thinking probably day three, they're a little bit sore. It's not my fun. And that may change a little bit, but, uh, but that's what I have for you from the middle school. Oh, and I also say this too, there's a neat little function I was playing around in final forums, which is kind of our central hub uh, for registering for athletics. And so of the individuals signed up for sports across the board, seasons one through five at the middle school, forty-eight percent of those individuals are multi-seasoner. Yeah, that's real encouraging.
Awesome.
So the high school, kind of the same format. Um, bowling. Uh, they, you know, bowling, they, they do bowling, it offsets a little bit with the traditional start of winter sports, and I think it has to do with not, uh, not clogging up, uh, the end of the season. And so it starts a little bit early, finishes a little bit early. So, uh, we had eleven athletes out this year, that's, uh, two more than last year. Seven of those are multi-season athletes and a really smart group of young women. Um, they were acknowledged at the state level for the outstanding team award, had a combined varsity GPA of three point eight nine seven. That's really, really strong. Uh, girls' basketball, seventeen athletes, that's one addition compared to last, last year. Fourteen of those are multi-sport athletes. They also received an outstanding team award at the state level with a three point six one four GPA. A little bit about girls' basketball too, so they, they kind of ran hot and cold, they played well, they would be the first to acknowledge when they didn't, uh, play their best game, but they did in the end. Um, jockey for that fourth place in league. And because the north represents seven school districts and the south represents nine, in an eight-man district bracket, we represent three point five and the south represents four point five. What that means is for that eighth spot in that bracket, our four would play their five for that spot. So we got to host that game with Los Shugel, and unfortunately, uh, well, we didn't come out on top, but, you know, just, uh, getting into that big tail game, that's a victory. That's a victory. Let's see, okay, boys' basketball, thirty athletes, two more than last year, twenty of those are multi-sport athletes. And, um, academically, they were acknowledged with the distinguished team award, three point oh nine four GPA. Girls' wrestling, we started with six, we had one transfer out of district, we had one that didn't see the season through, and I forgot about what the other, the other two did, but we did finish with two outstanding athletes, um. Um, Ms. Emily Weddell and, and Casey Case, who, uh, really made some noise in, in the wrestling world. And, uh, each of them earned a spot at state. And my last slide tonight, we'll, we'll show them together. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but just those two, um, they also were acknowledged with the distinguished team award, three point GPA. Boys' wrestling, we had twenty-nine athletes in addition of fourteen, twenty-one are multi-sport athletes. Uh, basketball cheer had big cheer squad, um, seventeen, that's, uh, six more than last year, twelve are multi uh, activity athletes, summer sports, summer cheer in the fall as well. And then wrestling cheer, we had four, um, all of which do something else during the year, be it an activity or sport. And so across the board as a whole in the high school, for twenty-two, twenty-three, forty-six percent of, of all the athletes are, are multi-sport athletes.
Oh, here, um. Well, let's just take for the girls' basketball. How many teams are there? Is there a freshman team? Um, uh, junior varsity team and then a varsity team, how do you, how do you? Or is there, or there are not?
So with those numbers, that wouldn't support a third team. So we have a varsity team and we have a JV team. Uh, we would really like to see that program have, uh, uh, what we might call a C squad team or a JV two team. Um, but we just haven't had the numbers to support that as of yet.
But, but dude, but do other schools have that?
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to think back on when I was, um, in school, there was always a
Yeah, a lot of times junior varsity and a varsity. Sure, sure, and our boys' basketball did.
Did, okay.
They did, and we, and a lot of times you'll have that, you'll refer to that as the C squad. Uh, but in arbiter are one of the AD's central, uh, communication pieces, it's JV two, same thing. Okay, those games are played over at the, at the elementary school in that gym on game nights.
And why do you think there's plus fourteen in the boys' wrestling?
You know, uh, again, I think, uh, there were numbers that were turned away last year with, with the having to test.
Couldn't be the coach, could it?
Uh, well, I'll tell you what, that gentleman, we need to hold on to him, he's done a terrific job and
I'm, I'm not sure about him.
You know, and he's, he's had, he's been really patient with, uh, um, some of the success he's having in that that the program is growing. And what's, what's hard as a coach, when you work that hard and he's extremely knowledgeable, what he does is have to give up points at a duel, because you have to forfeit weight classes, because you can't fill.
Uh-huh.
But we're getting, we're getting good numbers that are going to be transitioning into the high school, so uh, we need to come around that program as well to get it stronger.
Some questions about that other than Thomas?
I'd say real celebrations about the scholastic honors.
Yeah, oh yeah.
They're working hard academically and, um.
Yeah.
Courts of field, yeah.
Yeah, definitely piggyback off that. Excellent grade point average. There's a lot of work these kids put into every day going to these practices, so.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a challenging balance and they've done it well. They really have. So this is just some of the, uh, the lead accolades in girls' basketball, junior Delaney Winters, she was, uh, named first team all league. Um, senior Rosheen Stoll and, and junior Mandy Andrea Cordell were named honorable mention for girls' basketball. Boys' basketball, second team honors went to senior Lorenz Payne. Honorable mention to sophomore Carson Roder. And these are things that are voted on by the head coaches, just so you know. Uh, bowling, um, you know, every team gets a chance at district and, and those ladies are chose. Uh, maybe different some other programs, but I know in our program and I agree with it, it's, it's the strongest pin average over the season are the seven that go and represent your school in bowling. Uh, and so those people were Taylor Staley, Elaine Slifer, Kira Smith, Casey Smith, Maddie Beck, Serenity Hurst, and, uh, Kalen Black. They didn't get out of, uh, a district, but again, had you been there, I know Dr. Bethman was there and you know, they're squealing and chanting and supporting each other and high-fiving other teams, and it's a, uh, it's a pretty energetic, uh, um, opportunity for sure. Excellent. And so lastly, I thought this was a great shot, this was taken, this was taken at, uh, at regionals. And so we had six people make it out of subregionals, uh, into regionals, Emily, um, she, uh, took first place, um, regional champion, Kaylee Kinnett. Uh, a third place, Reese Kaliko, fourth, Owen Gillespie, Deckdane, um, and Jaden Nichols also. Um, the, uh, the, the first three, Emily Kaylee and Reese made it out of regionals for, uh, I think the state at Matt Classic this last weekend. And proud of all of them, uh, Emily one of did end up taking third place um, in her, in her weight classification, just one addition to Emily too, I don't know if you've ever heard her sing. Um, but I was, uh, I was, I was working, I didn't have to work too hard either, so, so she sang the anthem at regionals and also at Matt Classic, and it was extremely
Whoever posted the video, that was a very good job. As I saw it, and then I think I immediately text her. Yeah, hey, did you see this? Do you know who this is right here?
Well, she's deceptive, because she can sing with this, this voice that raises goosebumps on your arm every time you hear, and then take you down, throw you down.
Now, what, what year is she?
She's a senior.
Oh, she's.
Yes. Anyway, that's my report this evening.
Excellent, very good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Oh, I guess, where is, where do they bowl at?
Um, our home lanes are fairway lanes, like you go into Central, you head toward the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay.
There.
Remember that overpass?
Yeah, not too far on the right down there and, um, about a dump.
Thank you.
Transfer state.
Well, keep going, keep going, keep coming.
Yeah.
I remembered seeing it back there.
The, the district meet is, uh, up at West Side Lanes. Up at that Black Lake.
Nice. Well, excellent report, thank you. All right. And at this time, um, we're, our next report is going to be on the foundations update, proactive and positive behaviors.
And for this, we have our four assistant principals. Um, I'll introduce them all and then they can remind you who they are as they come up. But first would be Danny Cerns from the primary school. And then we'll have Kelsey Lincoln, um, Todd Trebbin and Heather Brooks. And if, if you remember, they report, they gave a report about the work that they were going to do with foundation teams in their bit building in the fall, um, which was really about, um, the behavior structures and systems that they're putting in place to try and help kids um, learn how to behave and our teachers, so that we're all teaching the same message to the kids. Um, if you think back, I think this is where Todd brought some very good, um, visuals for us to look at with the the dominos about how the, each step is really important for our kid. So, um, they're here now to tell you about how they're on that whiteboard. Now we're, um, they're here to tell you halfway through the year how things are going. So, thanks for being here tonight.
I'm happy to be here, my name is Danny Kearns from Rochester Primary School, I'm the assistant principal there. And I will get started with slide number one. So, our foundation team updates this year, um, our goal as a building was to work on our common areas. Um, described last time as places in the school that aren't typical classrooms. So, uh, it could be dismissal, could be arrival, could be hallways, assemblies. Um, our goal was to create clear expectations around the three common elements of be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. Um, our team has created those for each of those locations and those have been taught this year. And we have just started doing observations of those common areas. So looking at the, um, the look fours and the different common areas that the team has, um, found to be respectful, responsible, and safe, and seeing how kids are following through with that and how adults are, um, reacting and managing behaviors. Um, we're working on creating our visual posters with, um, some different visual aids for our younger kids who can't always read the words. And some videos are in development for teaching kids those structures. Um, we worked a lot on correcting fluently as adults, meaning as students have a misbehavior in the building, each time they come across an adult, an adult is correcting that behavior. It happens in our hallways a lot, I'll say, walk please, instead of stop running. They'll go to the next adult who's stationed at an intersection, walk please. Hopefully, by the time they've heard it the third time, we're walking and we don't have to get into a power struggle. Uh, but that correcting fluently, always asking kids to do the expected behavior. And then, um, we've been working on our team on reviewing data. And you'll, you'll see some of that and some updates that we've been doing with recess, using that data specifically around lining up at the end of recess. So that, um, our K through two students are keeping their hands to themselves, because you'll see in the next slide. Um, based on data so far this year, uh, not being safe is the number one reported offense. And it doesn't surprise us in kids coming post-COVID and, um, working on social skills. Um, oftentimes, when we're angry or frustrated or things aren't going away, we push, shove, pick, poke, all of those would be in the not being safe category. That is standing out to me on that graph, I don't know. So, on the next slide, you'll see I took it a step in a little, so you can see. You're right. Um, so the number of offenses in kindergarten for not being safe are two hundred and nineteen. The number of students in that grade level are a hundred and seventy-two. The number of students committing the offense of not being safe are thirty-four, so about twenty percent of those kids. And if I look at the total number, we have a few kindergartners that have quite a few, um, that's the same student over and over. And we're working on different levels of support. Uh, in first grade, we have a hundred and one not being safe offenses, uh, a hundred and sixty-nine kids, thirty-nine, thirty-five of those are committing those offenses. And that's a little bit more spread out. But by second grade, we're down to sixty-six not being safe offenses. Uh, number of students in that grade level, a hundred and sixty-seven, a number of students committing those offenses are sixteen, so we're nine percent. So I'm hoping you'll see that as they go through our system, from kindergarten to second grade, we're providing some supports and some reteaching, because a lot of times in this grade, it's all about instructing kids on how to interact well with each other. That gets us to less of those not being. So if you go to the next slide, uh, if you look at where it's happening by location, so this gets back to a little about our common area work. So, a lot of the work we've done this year has been in the lunchroom, you can see we only have six referrals in that area. Uh, we've worked a lot on playground, we're getting up there in playground, and that's why we're addressing the lineup issue. When get kids all together lining up and they're not three feet apart, like they have been in future or past years, sorry. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, pushing and shoving that is happening, and we're, we're addressing that with some different ways of lining up. By having a bubble or maybe having a spot in the playground like GMES has. Uh, but the biggest one right now is classroom-based offensive. And that's something moving forward that we want to address. Um, with either CHAMP or another specific program that might support with, with classroom. Yes, sir.
So when you're talking about the lining up, so to help you, uh, do that, um, one arms length.
Yes, the bubble space, we're, we're trying to do two hands together, because when we do one, it kind of ends up being, but, um, yes, we're going to instruct back.
That's also a military.
Is it? Well, I want our school enjoyable and fun, so I'm hoping we're not too materialistic, but.
So everyone, be, um, wrote that you have one arms length in front of you.
I think it's going to help us.
Okay.
Yep.
And if you want them close together, you put their hand out to the side like that, and they don't get any closer than that right there.
Okay, you know what, I'm, I'm open to advice. All right, so, yeah, I think it's probably going to work, yes, sir, Mr. Winner.
Uh, what is unspecified?
Unspecified means the teacher who put in the referral did not specify the location, which is one thing we're working on as well as the staff. To make sure every time a referral is inputted, I know where it's happened. That helps us know, um, how to mitigate future offenses and how to set up an environment to help kids. Um, unspecified means that it wasn't safe when you referred.
I was just thinking, well, maybe it started in the classroom, then it worked in hallway, playground, so it could be something else on the list.
Well, it does, and it could be, that could be one of the reasons, but more often than not, it's somebody forgot. Um, a discipline action, so mostly it's a conference with myself, um, sometimes it's an FYI or an info only, the teachers manage the situation, but I still want the data. Um, I want to know how many times it's happening, I want to know, um, much as possible, so that's an FYI, we've started using this year and we're going to get better at that. Um, and then the hub pride pace room, I cannot express enough the value that I place on Carrie Richards and K Marquez, who run our hub space. They are brilliant at working with kids in regulation. A lot of our kids are coming in trauma-impacted, impacted by the pandemic, impacted by biological or neurodiverse needs, and they can work with these kids, they're just, Amy, my principal, calls them the kid whispers, and they're absolutely amazing. And it's all educationally based and less punitive and more restorative, which is how we're trying to build these kids to be successful and like school, even at a young age, when it can be challenging. Um, you will see that we have suspended students this year, that's the ZOS, the last line. Um, it's thirty-one suspensions, we know that's not an intervention. Um, and it's done for the safety of staff and students when kids become too, they impact the learning environment too extensively, and it's not safe for them to be at school. It is nine students.
At, at what point? Um, um, is the parents, um, notify, excuse me, I have to think of the correct word here. But at what point are they notified? Would a teacher notify the parents first, or when it goes from the teacher disciplining the child or writing it down? Does it go from them, and then when it comes to you, then you notify at what point in their
It's a great question. So family involvement and communication is across all of our tiers, which we'll get into next. But I like and encourage, I, and can support teachers through making the first contact with, with parents. I'd like it to be early in the year with a positive phone call. And then later on, when we have something that comes up that might be more negative, then we can have a conversation where we build that relationship, which is why the connecting for success conferences are so amazing. Um, but, uh, the teacher reaches that first. Uh, when it's escalated, to sometimes the teacher, teacher will reach out two or three times before I'm involved, it also depend on the severity. If.
Yeah, 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 I understand that, yeah.
But communication's key, and we want to have that partnership between home and school as much as possible. Yes, thank you for asking. Uh, next is RPS students without referrals, so we have four hundred and seventy-two total students paid to. A hundred and eighty-six students have received referrals this year. Two hundred and eighty-six students have not, so sixty percent of our population hasn't been referred for an offense. Um, which is awesome, yeah. And I, I've got to be, I got to be honest with you, at the beginning of the year, I told our staff, I want to know what's going on, so please put in the referral, it's good communication for me. It's good data for us to know. So we're referring as often as we can, so that I can get clear data and see improvement over time. So, I'm really proud of that sixty percent.
Uh, Wana? Do you have any questions? If you do, so please speak up at any time.
I'm listening, I'm listening, thank you.
Let me know.
I want to make sure you're, I'm, I'm so glad you're here, I want to make sure you're included.
Yeah, thank you.
What's my time, Kelsey? Uh, RPS tier support, so this is tier one support, so when we're talking about students, um, the majority of our population need to receive supports for, um, building their skills with social emotional needs. So we have our second step curriculum that's taught school-wide, that's what the SW means, that also focuses on our bully prevention unit, which is taught in October. Um, we have the five-point scale, which you can see a picture of there to help with kids' self-awareness, so we know, um, how to teach students to identify where they are within the scale. One meaning ready to learn to five, I'm going to flip my lid. Um, or I half flipped my lid. Uh, Kelso's choices, which, uh, you have a choice, Kelso the Frog's teaching us how to, um, choose not to punch or hit or kick or any of those things. Uh, we have regulation stations or calming corner tools in classrooms, flexible seating, you'll see the ISO there, so that kids can, can move. Uh, warrior of the week, as some of you have come to our assemblies, I know I've seen Mr. Trot there to celebrate students who are Uh, warrior of the week, as some of you have come to our assemblies, I know I've seen Mr. Trot there to celebrate students who are exhibiting um last month with perseverance. Um, interacting positively and building relationships with students is a tier one. Our Desa screener, which identifies, um, I think it's eight social emotional competencies um that the teachers fill out so that we can see who might be struggling with self-awareness or social awareness. Um, we have brain breaks, bucket filling, uh, which is noticing um others and expressing gratitude. We're filling their bucket by complimenting and then behavior analysis, support and coaching. And you'll notice that in all three tiers and our behavior analyst Jessica Whitehead is new to us this year. And she has been fundamental in our class and our schools moving forward with supporting kids with uh a large amount of um social emotional. She's been amazing. If you have not met her, she's awesome. These guys will probably talk about her too. So tier two, if we're looking at the tier two level, um, this is where we get into our social emotional small groups with our counselor, our friendship groups with our counselors, hub support, which includes reteaching, focus finders, which are different ways to get kids to regulate. Um, we have break plans. Check in and check out. You'll see a a picture of that at the bottom or different times during the day, students are getting points for meeting their goals. Um, contingency mapping at the top. This is the decision. This is what I did. If I would have chose this in the green path, this is where I would have ended up if I, but I chose this and this is where I ended up. Uh, brought to us by Jessica Whitehead. It's been going wonderful with our kids. Social stories like our waiting in line, social story, uh, giving kids jobs so that they feel they're contributing to our school in a positive way has been really impactful for a lot of kids that need that sense of belonging. Um, and then our cat team, our child assistance team, teachers can refer students to for extra support with academics or with behavior. Uh, tier three is the smallest portion of our student body that needs behavior analyst support and coaching. Um, again, Jessica Whitehead is putting together F B A's, a functional behavior analysis is fifth, behavior intervention plans. Uh, we have hub behavior plans. We work with True North and Wise for counseling that extends beyond the needs or beyond the um so of our school counselors. And then five oh four and I E P plans for kids as well too. Um, but those are kids that are really struggling with behaviors and we need the most intense supports that we can provide.
True North is a mental health counselors that we.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. Um, and I think that might be my last slide, but let's just see. Yeah, if I got through, I was probably. Um, but things are kids are going well. Um, and I'm really proud of the work our teachers are doing, creating that positive environment that feels warm and a good spot for kids to learn.
Oh, one question I think was on in the tier one area, you mentioned bullying.
Yes.
Okay, uh, without going, um, uh, uh, how do you, how do you handle that? Uh, when, I mean, because I know there's all types of of bullying. And then when as you go through different layer of of school, they start getting phones, there's bullying on that, so.
I would say at the K two level, when we teach the bully prevention unit, it's amazing how many kids are all of a sudden being bullied because you know someone was mean to them or said something that was unkind. So we try to make it clear that it's oftentimes a repeated offense. There's an imbalance of power. Um, it's, you can see our harassment intimidation and bullying um policy and procedure as well. And it's in our rights and responsibilities handbook, but typically I will start an investigation. Uh, there is a report on our district website where your uh parents can turn it in that way. If they haven't done so, if I've gotten a report via email, I'll print that report out and fill it out. I investigate um starting with the student who is oftentimes the victim and then researching and looking into who was the offender and um and building from there. It really kind of is a case by case situation.
Right.
Um, but then making a plan to uh restore and and make things better. Yes, uh, but it happens often. Um, and oftentimes it will be found that it is not indeed a bullying.
One time you're okay, two times we're gonna look at you, three times.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Just make it easy.
Keep it track of all, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Skyward does a great job of keeping track of that as well. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I'll leave it to Kelsey Lincoln from Grand Mountain Elementary School.
Actually, I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Trot.
Now, um, the tier three, using kids that are behaving badly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of this situation, I noticed that there was thirty-one incidences where children were suspended.
Yes, sir.
And how many of those were in this fear three versus tier two or tier one?
That's a very great question. Some of them are being currently evaluated. See if they qualify for supports within tier three. Um, some are already in tier three. Uh, others are not, but I can't give you a definitive number right now. That would be something that we need to get in and look at more closely.
I know that, you know, we wanted to be on social emotional learning, the board, we really did pushing this.
Oftentimes when they come into us from kindergarten, um, we're not going to move forward with an I E P or a five oh four necessarily until they've had some time to adjust to being in school. So um this time of year is when we start looking at, is this something more than at the hub can provide supports for, is it more pervasive?
So the lunchroom is getting better?
The lunchroom is, the lunchroom's been amazing. And we're working in it safe and we've got a new way to come in and we're managing that. So don't come tomorrow because it's day four of walking in a new way, um, which can be hard for kids, but um it is getting much better.
Okay, we're gonna have to hold your feet to the fire a little bit more.
Go ahead. I'm ready.
Any, um, any, any kids that um um, either have an investigation against them, more than one, let's just, let's say more than one troublemaker. Does that go on from your school? If school stays in, if the child stays in the system, does that go from your school to your school when they move from one grade to the next? And so, so when it happens again at your school, you will know that you've had multiple, multiple incidents.
Multiple incidents with the same offender and victim. Yes, I was gonna say, sorry to jump in. Um, but the nice thing about Skyward is you're not just checking buttons. There's a narrative piece. So you can be specific on who's involved in the incident. And so we can look back and look at that and see if all these kiddos have had history before.
Okay, okay, good. And that goes to the whole system. So, so if a, if a child stays from, you know.
Kindergarten through.
Through a senior, through a senior.
Yeah.
Through a senior, they can, they can track that. Okay.
Wana, any questions?
Thank you.
No, I'm here. I had to unmute. Um, no, I I think it's very uh uh, interesting or very good um system that they have going on like uh Thomas asked. So if it starts from K through twelve, there's all those incidents in Skyward, so it's, it sounds like it's a good system.
And that holds our feet to the fire because then we don't have an excuse.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And when, and when I say our feet to the fire, our feet to the fire. So exactly, document everything.
If it's not on paper, it didn't happen.
Exactly.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you so much.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm Kelsey Lincoln. I'm the assistant principal at Grand Mount Elementary. Um, big shoes to fill right there. Uh, so some of the foundations work that we are doing at G M E S. So we meet monthly as a team within our building. We have representatives from each grade level. We have um educational assistants that are on it. We have stakeholders from all the areas. Um, and we work together to look at the data that we collect, see where there's issues happening. Think of creative ways that we can help support those students to be successful. Um, we reteach the expectations like Danny had mentioned um fluently and consistently providing those reteaching opportunities of what the expectations are. Our focus also within the common areas of the building. I don't know, uh, remember at the beginning of the year, we talked about how we did a walking tour of each of those common areas and we shared the expectations for all the students in the school. Every classroom went around to the breezeway, the pickup area, recess, cafeteria, all the common areas. And we explained, these are your be safe, be responsible, be kind expectations in that area. We also did that following winter break because you two-week break, the hiatus, they tend to forget what the expectations are. So we did that on the first day back from school. We went over those expectations again. Teachers did expectations in their classrooms before going out to recess. So we just revisited what those expectations were. Um, we also are observing the common areas to help solve the situations that are occurring in those areas. Um, I, the really, really tall one there, um, that's data that we don't necessarily have to look at. What that is, is how we were recording attendance. So students that might be gone for a day. That's not necessarily a discipline that we have to provide a consequence for. And so um that kind of skews our data that we have because it fell within the automatic grasp that comes up. So I just wanna, um, we have a total of two hundred and thirty-nine referrals so far this year, which averages two point two one per school day and of those two hundred and thirty-nine, fifty-four students at Grand Mount have a referral.
Uh, honey, remind me how many kids you have?
Four hundred and ninety-one. And so our locations, our biggest one also is the classroom. So it shares the common areas. Um, breezeway, cafeteria, classroom, gym, outside playground, restroom, specialist, and then that unspecified. Uh, Danny had mentioned that that's, those are referrals that didn't include the location of the offense. And so our biggest one is classroom and teachers are having support within their classroom from our behavioral behavioral analyst, Jessica Whitehead, who reaches out to teachers for those classrooms that need the additional support and um creates plans for the students and just provide support um for those teachers in the classrooms. Our district also is awesome at providing a champ support, which is a classroom management um, training for those teachers. Uh, most of the time, so we have similar actions. Um, most of the time it is done conference. And when we say conference, it doesn't necessarily mean with parents in tow. It could be a conference with both uh or my principal or myself and just reteaching what those expectations are going over the what act or what offense they caused and um going from there. So that would be conference. Um, I really want to encourage the F Y I. Like Danny, we encouraged for all offenses to be imported so that we have the data and we can really find out where things are happening. So that's one area that we'll be working on. So two hundred and thirty-nine referrals in third grade. That's only ten students that have gotten a referral this year, which is amazing. Um, and that's out of a hundred and forty-nine students. So a total of seven percent of our third graders have received a referral. And I think this speaks to the volumes of the work that's happening. K two, because they're prepping for them to transition to to G M E S. So the work is being done prior to them getting here. Fourth grade, twenty-one students out of a hundred and eighty-eight, so eleven percent of our students have referrals. Fifth grade, twenty-three students out of a hundred and fifty-four stu- out of a hundred and fifty-four students, which is fifteen percent of fifth grade have referrals. So of the four hundred and ninety-one, fifty-four have referrals, which is eleven percent and four hundred and thirty-seven do not have referrals. So the expectations talks are working or teachers. But I'd like to believe that the expectation talks are working. Um, we have amazing teachers who are not shy to put a referral in when uh the act or the offense requires. So it's not a lack of inputting referrals. But eighty-nine percent without referrals.
Quick question.
Yes.
How many kids per class?
It differs. Each grade level has a different top. Our um fourth grade sits about twenty-one students, third grade's right about there and then fifth grade is about twenty-four.
Yeah, under twenty-five.
Yes.
Hey, four thirty-seven, our referral, keep it up, kids.
That's right. Thank you. So some of the uh tier one supports at G M E S is um building relationships is number one and top key. Um, our three-to-one ratio, so three positives to one negative. Um, we like to encourage our students and reward our students for the good things that they're doing. So every one negative comment that they might hear, we want to give them three positive comments. Um, teaching expectations, we're doing that both in the classroom and that common areas. Self lessons are being done within the classroom, expectations, um, I wrote that twice. Uh, Desa, that is our S C L um screener, our social emotional screener, where our um teachers are grading our students in different areas of social emotional to see where they're sitting and where supports are needed. And then brain breaks. Um, a lot of our teachers take our kiddos out for just extra wiggle room or wiggle time. Um, they go on walks, they run, so they do things to get their bodies moving and get the oxygen so that they can get back in the classroom and learn and do what's right. Tier two, so I like their hub room at G at G M E S. It's called Pride. So we have a pride room support that um is an area where students go when they're needing like a calm down space, a break to refocus and get ready to go back in the class. Um, check in, check out. These are done with multiple adults in our building. Um, our specialists do check in and check out. Uh, administration does check in, check out. Our counselor does check in, check out. The um pride room does check in, check out. So there are many adults that are being positive relationships in the um school with students that are needing that. Our small groups of S C L, so that's um our counselor, who is meeting with students that with that Desa screener showed that they needed support. And so they are meeting as small groups to work on the different areas that they're needing that extra support. Our behavior and anal analyst, again, she helps throughout every tier. S S T, that's our student support team and that is like their cat team at um R P S. But the S S T team meets, uh, teachers can refer, anyone can refer a student that might be struggling with behavior or academics and then we build an intervention that could help that student get where they need to be. And then reteaching as needed.
So I have a question. So any, anybody say they need to go to the the pride room and they're having issues that day, somebody that they're having, having issues, is that tracked? So if.
There's data. Every time a student goes in there, it's logged.
Yeah. And so you would know how student, you know, A, B and C. Know how many times they go in there and if it's forming a pattern.
Yes.
Pattern, pattern.
And that's the data that we'll use if they reach the S S T.
Uh-huh.
And they're needing even more intervention to help support that need of going to the pride room. That's some of the data that we would use in that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And so tier three, again, our behavior analyst support and coaching. And when we're support and coaching, that's supporting our students, but as well as helping coach our teachers on how they can provide support within the classroom for those students. I E P, individualized educational plan, which can come with the behavior plans or behavior improvement plans and then a five oh four plan. And that was fine. That is where I'm at G M E S. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Wana?
Nope, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And before I forget, towards the end of mine, you won't see all the the tiered sports and stuff. As I was looking at my slides, I looked at theirs and I'm like, my slides are gonna pretty much be copy paste of theirs. So most all of those tiered levels of supports we offer at the middle school as well. Um, but um, yeah, no Legos or anything today, although Kevin was um talking and I'm like, I could have done a really good thing with some pitchers and our like leaders and offenses and stuff, but probably wouldn't have done any. But we have lots of multi-offense students and multi-sport athletes.
The multiple, multiple area.
So foundations, we spoke to you earlier in New York, some of the work we were doing to set students in our schools up for success. And a few of the successes that we've experienced as a result of that, we have um seen a big improvement in cell phones in classrooms, hoodies on in classrooms. And I'll talk a little bit about why that's an issue and tardies. Although I think I have to attribute the tardies a lot to the locking of classroom doors as much as the other efforts that we've made. And tardies, although I think I have to attribute the tardies a lot to the locking of classroom doors as much as the other efforts that we've made. Um, not on the list, student staff, often they wanna talk about things like. Some dress code issues and stuff like that, but I'm like, I really wanna focus on the things that I feel like have the biggest impact on student engagement in their learning. And, um, cell phones are a huge one when students are checked out, looking at their cell phones and hoodies as. As much it is a comfort thing and stuff, our kids were putting on their hoods, they were putting their head down, you couldn't see them, they had earbuds on underneath. And it just seemed like a big form of checking out. Um. I agree, it seems kind of like a petty rule, but it really has improved the engagement i- in our school. Uh, we do allow hats and beanies and yeah, they can kinda steal hiding, but if you're having a bad hair day on, throw a hat on, you know, you just don't need your hoodie. Um, but prior to this year, those, those would have been at the top of our list of complaints from teachers and staff. And kind of as a result of our foundations work, we, we addressed the problem or we identified the problem as a staff. We communicated what our plan of attack was gonna be. Um, we made everybody commit. What you can't have in this system. Is a teacher that, well, it's okay to have your classroom out in Mr. Trot's room, but not Mr. Turner's. Because you're setting up Mr. Turner to be the biggest meanie, cause he the jerk, Mr. Trot's nice, he lets us have our phone out. And you just can't do that to your coworkers. So we gave, we made some progress, working very well. Um, and we communicated it neck for success conferences with parents. We let them know, hey, here's a few of the big things that we're gonna focus on. Most parents get on board, not a lot of complaints. Um, and then of course you gotta teach it, reteach it and correct it fluently as you've heard. So, moving on, um, just some consistency, um, kind of a breakdown of our offenses. Um, I really wanted to work this into the present- presentation. One thing that you won't see on there, it's not really a student discipline issue. But, um, if there was a stat on Heimlich maneuvers, we did have a teacher today, Jennifer Littlefield, a student was choking in her class, he had ate a Mike and Ices. And, uh, student alerted her, she like tried the pat on the back, didn't work and, and she gave him the Heimlich maneuver and it. The object ejected and, uh, success story. So that was pretty cool. Um, Jen Littlefield, if you see her, superhero. Um, kind of a breakdown of our offenses. I'll tell you, the, these categories are really tough. Disrespect, disruptive, failure to cooperate. Um, cause they overlap so much. Basically, when you don't follow a school rule or an expectation. You're being disrespectful, you're often being disruptive and you're failing to cooperate. So to be honest, we, those categories are really hard to. To delineate out, um, but that's kind of the breakdown of offenses at the middle school. Um. Actions. Now, one thing that, that I will talk about actions, you don't see as many. Sorry, I'm a legal person, like conferences, like, um, Kelsey talked about, you know, and Danny, a lot of our meetings are just meeting with the student, talking about what happened. Okay, that happens about a thousand times more than this shows. Um, we are always conferencing with students, talking about what's happened. What we find, something that happens at the middle school that to my knowledge is different in the primary and elementary. Is we turn on the email notification in Skyward when a student gets a referral. So in middle school, parents start getting an email every time there's a referral. And historically, that was beautiful. Parents love the communication. They like to know that before we gave their kid a lunch detention, we talked to your kid like twenty times before that. But I don't know what's happened in the last few years, but so many parents like. Just like, okay, my kid's never gonna get a job because you put in a referral in there that you talked to my kid and, and it just becomes this big. Battle and they, they say, well, that's not disciplined. If you didn't like give them a consequence. And to be honest with you, in some cases, it's just not a battle that, that I wanna fight. So, um, it happens way more than the system shows. Um, just know that. Um, lunch attentions definitely. Way more often than we would like, um, but. Middle school kids are very social a- at some point, sometimes taking away some of their, their friend time and stuff seems to be what's most effective. Um, although not always super effective. Um, we do have, just like the other school, the celebration, you know, seventy percent of our students. Do not have a referral. I, I, I mean, we have so many good kids. In our system and at a recent staff meeting, you know, staff get frustrated and stressed and you know, the, it's out of control, you know, and. People don't wanna be here because kids are so bad. And we point out, okay, seventy percent of our kids don't have any referrals. Substitutes come into our building and tell us overall, hey, your kids are pretty well behaved. Um, I really do believe all of our kids have gotten better. Our good kids have gotten better at being good. Some of our kids that don't meet the expectations have gotten better at not meeting the expectations. And I think they wear on you extra heavy. Um, so it does feel like. Um, sometimes it's falling apart, but it's really not a huge number of kids. It's a lot of the, the same kids over and over. Which is frustrating because people pour their heart and soul into it, but we do see a lot of success. And those numbers show it. It's kind of interesting as they were talking about the primary. Um, referrals decreased. We actually, and this is a year after year. Friend, sixth graders have like the fewest percentage, twenty two percent, then thirty four percent, then eight. Um, forty two percent is eighth graders. That's a little high this year, but, um, I think some of that's just that. Pretty teen coming a teenager rebellion, you know, um, and they're just kinda testing the waters a little bit, but that's pretty typical of what we see.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Looking at the RMS disciplinary actions graph. Uh, let's see, we got L D one, L D two, L D three, L D four.
One day lunch detention, five, two days of lunch detention, three days of lunch detention, five days of lunch detention.
Yeah.
The five day would be the kids that I have asked like seventy five times to please stop playing with your food. And pounding on your milk carting and exposing it at lunch and they continue to do it.
Is it only that?
So yeah, on occasion.
Honestly, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I took it in a breakfast club.
I don't like it. It's just like, it's like, okay, come on. I don't know what else to do with you at this point. Um, you have contact at home, we had conferences, I'm.
Like, so what was, so the lunch detention, what is that? E- equal eight to, I mean, they get their food, they go and sit.
They get their food, they go into a different room or reset room. Um, it's just not out in the commons with all their friends. They can read a book, they can do homework, they, they're not supposed to have their phone out or their earbuds. But they just gotta lose the social aspect of their lunch.
So they're not in trouble with some other kids that are in trouble sharing the same space, being in trouble.
Um.
Making new friends.
They're not supposed to be interacting, but oftentimes they get a referral while they're out there serving time for getting a referral. But I, I don't think people are getting swayed to one side or the other out there. Yeah. And a couple of kids got in a fight or something, you know, which we don't have a whole lot of fights. We don't stick them out there right next to each other while everything's.
Okay, so they're not escalating more issues while they're on detention?
No, not generally.
Okay.
Big question.
That was my only thing, it was like, I was watching the graph, I'm like, well, the graph's going down, so whatever's happening is improving.
Yeah.
But, uh, detention wide is rather high.
Right.
Thank you.
And so some things that we, that we still need to work on, um, a- at the middle school. Um, restroom misuse i- is at an all time high of my career and it's a really tough one. Because we don't have camera. It seems like unstructured times, our students struggle in not highly structured environments. We were able to really see a positive changes in those structured environments, struggling with restroom, um. Again, one of the biggest things is students, again, I think it's that middle school age, they've learned that we can't, we won't tell a student, no, you can't go to the bathroom. I don't know if they really need to go or not. You know, you've all heard the stories of somebody, you know, having an accident, we never wanna cause that. So we can't really tell the kid. No, we can contact home and stuff when we see patterns and talk about what's reasonable and there are medical issues, but. It's just knowing, hey, when the, the work gets too hard in class or something like that, I need to go to the bathroom, I need to go to the bathroom and. They've coordinated to meet their buddy from a different class at the same time in the bathroom. And I can't hang out in the bathroom all day and we don't have a whole lot of extra staff members. So. That's something that we're, we're working, we're done, we're brainstorming as a staff and a foundations team, what are some systems we can put in place to track that, monitor it better? Um, communicate with parents, but, um. They're just bathroom, they're, they're stuffing things down the toilets and the urinals. It's really disappointing, um. So that's one of the things that we need to work on. Um, messes, kind of that same thing, you know, playing with food in the commons, you know. Federal guidelines, everybody has to take a piece of fruit and stuff and well, give a banana to five hundred middle school students when three hundred of them don't want the banana. And guess what happens with the banana? Um, so, but we put on some systems, we put a tray real close where you can take your banana, you can put it right in the tray and stuff, but, um. Things like that, hallway behavior and noise level, again, a little more unstructured, something that we're talking about. Um, but I think one of the most important things is our counselors, um. Like we've heard, they talk to all of our health classes and students about bullying and social emotional learning. Um, strategies and techniques, but, um. Fifty percent of our students report that they have encountered, uh, harassment, intimidation, bullying type situation. And only thirty two percent of those reported that they, they intervened or they felt comfortable intervening. So we need to work with our students and give them some skills and strategies on how to be an upstander. Somebody who, when they see bullying or something like that intervenes to, to help rather than just a bystander. So that is something that we're, we're, I think that's our next big thing that we're working on at the middle school. Um, and just something that doesn't show up in, in the data, just, but I, I wanted to share with you guys. Um, you know, we've had at the middle school about thirteen hundred line wise alerts, that's our school filtering software. That students may be looking at something inappropriate on their Chromebooks. Um, a lot of those are false alarms. Um, I can tell every time when Mr. Baby's doing his tobacco. Alcohol vaping units, because students are researching all that stuff. A lot of those are, are not inappropriate whatsoever. Um, but they are things that as assistant principals that we do have to track and follow up on. And I just kinda wanted to point that out that, um. But we also need to work with students on, on responsible technology and making good choices. Um, so that's my report.
Thank you, Ted.
All right. Wanda, are there any questions for you?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Neil.
Okay, well, keep checking. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Heather Brooks, uh, this is my successful life. Wonderful to be here tonight. So, um, okay. I went ahead and put, um, the arrows above because like Todd was saying. Failure to cooperate, disruptive, disrespectful, um, are really the same type of category. Um, same with tardies, intruency. Um, either late or they're, they're not there. Um, our biggest area is electronic devices. Probably need to get together with Todd. Um, I think the biggest issue that we have with the cell phones is. We, um, are working toward a common agreement with staff. And a lot of people, when the kids get to high school, believe they need to be using it as a tool, they need to be. Um, responsibly taught how to use it when they're going into the workforce. They need to, you know, there's a lot of things, this is kind of that last opportunity, cell phones are not going away. How do we teach them to be responsible users? Um, with that, that's our, one of our largest areas of concern. So. We have six hundred and one total students. We've had ninety six of our kids receive referrals. And we have eighty four percent of our students have not received any referrals. So we're really, really proud of that. Um, I did do like a generalized breakdown where I combined, um, a lot of the behaviors. So we have twenty four percent is cellphone use, twenty three percent is tardy, currency or leaving class early. Twelve percent is disrespect, disruption or failure to comply. Um, eight percent is inappropriate writing, language or gestures. Six percent is unsafe, um, behavior or misconduct, four percent is vaping or marijuana use. Three percent is harassment and bullying. And then we have three percent, which is fighting verbal altercations or weapons. I lumped some of the things at the bottom that are a little bit lower. Um, lying, cheating, theft, dress code and inappropriate computer years, although we do get the occasional. Porn searches, those types of things where, um, we definitely take those more seriously. But in general, it is a lot of looking up, um, stuff from their health class and different things that really are appropriate. So as far as disciplinary actions, um. Lunch detention is obviously our go-to and that's really corresponds with the cellphone use. So they use their phone inappropriately in class. Um, step one, the teacher gives them a warning. Contacts the parent if it continues to happen. Um. And then eventually gets to the point they write them a referral. I talk to them, we usually conference about, you know, respectful care of how to use the phone. Um, you know, I tell them I don't answer my phone at work. Um, I've been a student in college, you know, kind of helping to prepare them to use it in a manner that's acceptable. And then the lunch detention goes along with that and that is. Where we have someone pick them up from their class, go to get their lunch with them and then they're in the room and they do a. Think kind of a problem solving sheet, which is really basic, just, uh, what kind of other choices and a lot of that's through discussion. So it's not just them sitting and writing, it's really talking kind of two on one or one on one with the lady in there about. Um, how it might be affecting their grades or, or different choices that they're making and how they can make better choices. Conferencing, um, I do a lot of that and really that includes mediation as well. So when I have two kids who aren't getting along, I'll put conference, but a lot of times I'll do mediation with them. Where I bring them both in, we kind of talk about the, the main problem, we listen to both sides. Um. We kind of go through that whole process of how do we make this better? What are we going to do moving forward so that, um. You know, we don't have the same thing happen. Sometimes that ends up working really, really well. They shake hands, they leave. Occasionally they get to what's called a no contact order. And that means that, um, they will both sign that agreeing that while they're at school. Or games or any school activities, they will have no contact with each other, including, um, talking about them or posting things on internet. Um, we don't have a lot of those, but it does get to the point that it's just easier to say. We're going to, um, agree that we will have respectful or no. And I'm moving forward.
Are the parents involved in these also? These are these contracts?
Call and, um. I, so the other day we did do one and he wanted, he said, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable. And I said, well, let's call grandma. And, um, she wanted to come in and so, um, she just looked at it, I read through and then he felt comfortable signing. So it's nothing, if they don't sign, we still hold them to the same accountability. That's kind of the, the fun little thing that happens in there. Um, they would still be expected to do the same behavior. Uh, that's just them saying, I agree that that's the appropriate thing to do. So it's pretty basic. Um, I always read it with students, ask them if they have any questions and call home. To let them know. So I did, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I did the same thing with, um. The colored tabs, so. Everything in red is a type of either ISS, so in-school suspension, a class exclusion. Or a lengthy expression, um, suspension. All the way to where we start out with just mention from one period. To a forty day reduced to five, which is for, um. Explicit drug use at school. And so the, the forty days goes in. The student, we encourage and meet with parents and try to get them to do our true north drug and alcohol counseling. And then it's reduced by five days. Um, we want everyone to take advantage of that, to, um, be able to access. That drug and alcohol counseling, which is really, really important to them coming back and being successful. Um, class exclusion. I'll do that occasionally if there's been an incident where. The teacher and the student, um, had some kind of, uh, disagreement. One of the parties left not feeling, um, good. Disagreement, one of the parties left not feeling good about them coming in the next day. Something typically that reached a high enough level of behavior for them to not be in there, either name calling. Doing something with a desk or something where we really need to sit down. And so I will call the parent and I'll say they're going to be out of that class for one to two days, they'll be able to access their work in the library. We want that cool off period and then you're welcome to come, but the teacher, the student and I are going to meet and talk about. How we reset with before they go back into that class. And when I've done that, it's been very, very successful. It's a nice, it's a nice way to kind of get them back on track, not just sort of brushing it under the rug. Any, any questions so far? So I went ahead and just did a generalized breakdown about our discipline actions, forty-nine percent is detention. Thirty percent is conferencing, counseling, reteaching, twenty-one is suspension, including in and out of school. And the class exclusions and then six percent was just kind of FYI. So I started with tier three. Within our RISE team, we look at the three different factors, we look at attendance. Their DSA scores and if they're failing three or more classes. That would land them. Onto our RISE team, we also look at behavior, but a lot of times. The kids don't have a lot of behavior, they're just. Having that low DSA score, maybe not attending. And otherwise we might not even know there's something going on. Within the tier three, we match them with a mentor. So we have Brian Bolton, who's an outside mentor, we have a couple of other outside mentors. Or I have students and the counselors each take students. And that way each student is connected with one adult in the building. And that's kind of how we run our tier three, so we have a small percentage of students, I think we have nine right now. We do weekly check-ins, I'll put them on either behavior or an academic plan. I'll meet with them weekly where we pull up their grades, we look at percentages, I draft out a plan for them every week. These are the classes or the tests that you should tackle, kind of looking at the highest bang for their buck. So to say, rather than tackling fifteen five-point assignments, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And so I draft a plan with them every week. Have a lot more family communication and basically just support them in all the areas of their need. For tier two, a lot of it lives with our counselors. And with that, they do groups, so we really target what the students. Tier two is small group, tier three is individual. So with the small group, we look at what types of needs they have, either behavior needs, academic needs. Social emotional. And these are kind of the things that we're targeting in our groups right now. So conflict resolution, problem solving, goal setting, self-management, social awareness. A growth mindset versus a fixed mindset, kind of de-escalation. And then we have an executive functioning group, which is looking at organization, time management. Planning, prioritization, goal setting, flexible thinking, task, task initiation and self-regulation. So we have several groups going on right now. Our tier one. Right now, what we're working on are short cycles of targeted intervention. Excuse me, I mean, in our team, we just added students, so it's been kind of fun and exciting to bring the students in. We have three so far, we're hoping to grow a little bit bigger, but we really wanted to see. How that went at first and really get them on board with the. Understanding the entire plan and what that looks like with the different tiers. So we're doing a short cycle of targeted intervention right now for tardies. We're doing tardy sweeps, we have. Leadership going in in the morning and getting a a non-verbal signal from the teacher if they have tardies. And then at the end of the month, we're doing a no tardy party. So rewarding kids who are getting to class on time. We have our Warrior Way lessons, which we just did and re-taught, we have our SCL lesson focus, which. We have Erin Rowe and she's been really amazing at teaching. Social emotional structures within the classroom, so different teacher and student moves. And ways that we can support the kids through SCL. And then I think we just, one of our strengths is really that positive relationship and interactions. We also do the suicide and bullying prevention and we're working on putting more positive messaging throughout the school. I think that's probably it. Okay, any question?
So the, this is a, this is a tech question, so you're talking about. Kids getting on a computer and. Looking for things that they should not be looking for pornography or whatever it is, okay? And you can detect that. What about if they're doing that on their own phone?
Don't think I get the line wise from the phones.
So it will, the filter will catch and won't allow them as long as they're connected to the. If they're on a cellphone network. Not a single thing I can do.
But will it create a line wise report?
How, how would they get a cellphone network? Educate me on this.
Just taking off the wifi.
Just taking off the wifi?
Yeah, they're just connected to the Horizon's network. It's the same thing they do when they're at the home too, right?
And then Justin.
Yeah, we're not allowed to block cellphone.
Hey, I have a question, I read an email where it says that the parents now can disconnect the child from line wise.
They can, they can turn off the school issued computer, the internet to the school issued computer.
Okay.
The one that came out today? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if it's on a Sunday. Yeah, so if it's a Sunday, Sunday afternoon and child's not doing any homework, but the child is on. School property computer, then they can just turn it down, turn it off?
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You know, we'll add, the school software does amazing job, students will search for inappropriate stuff. They rarely actually get there because the software doesn't allow, we just get messages that they were trying. So then we follow up with a conversation to them, maybe parents, but they're generally not successful.
That's a good answer.
I, the, the thing was with with technology and content filters is bad people put bad content. On the internet faster than what good people can block the, block the bad content. So there, there will always be that, that small percentage and, and, and kids. Do work around, I wouldn't say work around the filter, but they work around ways though of. Being outside the filter and then getting interesting.
I had my first report in Chinese today, where the student had put in Chinese characters over the weekend. And was accessing something, you know, that he shouldn't. But I got the entire report emailed to me this morning from Jonathan Jet, who's amazing. At catching all of that and creating reports when there's a super high level need and. He does the best job, so the student was at home and he did access those things, but now it's up to me to. I'll put a lot of things in place for students, one student, for example. No longer has access to his computer beyond school hours and this is after many parent meetings, many. Opportunities. But we actually have a computer in every classroom for him to access so that. He can still keep up with his studies, but he, he no longer has the opportunity and we only have one student. Well, we have two, actually, sorry, we have two, but.
Don't go wrong, teenagers, hormones.
Any other questions?
I do, do you have the same issues with hoodies? Along with the cellphone issues and the earbuds and.
Yeah, that, a lot of students do wear their hoodies. Yeah, I liked some of the things that Todd was putting in place. I think that the problems we're having, you know, they kind of had them, like he said, as their biggest problems and now they're solving them. So I feel really optimistic that we, through more conversations, through more. Listening to each other, coming to some agreements about what our clear expectations are. Because like he said, we all have to be on the same page, that's the biggest thing right now. Is everyone needs to be thinking about the cell phones in the same way.
So here's a, and this is for all four of you, this has come up before, maybe not in this state, but in other states. About kids wearing school uniforms. So I know that's a sore subject for some people because it costs money and so on and so forth. Now, I didn't have that problem when I, when I was in high school with hoodies and stuff like that, but. They wear school uniforms. In my hometown and I think in every school.
I'm from San Diego, tons of school uniforms and public schools.
So.
So that's a policy you could look at.
Generally speaking, at GMS, we haven't had concerns of that, if they wear their hoodies, they'll take them off when asked.
I would say I love that they get to wear T-shirts that have different things, I connect with kids a lot that way, like you distracted once on a T-shirt. I think it causes problems.
To be honest, we have honestly some of the best kids ever. They're really, really amazing. Very fortunate.
Well, and I think the same thing of our assistant principal team, this is a team that's doing really good job with our kids and some of the most challenging kids that we do have that we're working with. And pulling data and looking at the data to inform the work they're doing and then doing it with a team from the buildings is really. They're, they're just doing great work, so I thank them for their work and I thank them for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for coming, love the report. Yeah, I'm looking at the numbers and it's just like cell phones. And trust me, in the workplace, it's a big problem for productivity. In the real life world is kids these days, they always got a phone, they're always staring at it.
Your vandalism, I think some of that comes from.
Yeah, it does. We cut all of the soap displays remove.
Yes, all right, well, at this point in time, we are on to business reports.
Do you mind if I let them go since kind of not great news out there?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
You're more than welcome to leave, would you give any reports? Try and save, I don't even know, Jill's looking out the window.
It seems to not be so weird.
No, you guys go.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
It's like blackboard jungle or something like that in the school teacher. If the teacher has a, can't control it, look at that and then you generally have a problem.
So I think the first one on the list is the enrollment summary for February. So our February FTE dropped a little to two thousand thirty-three. Which is typically normal at semester time to have that decrease, it was actually a smaller decrease than we historically had, so we were keeping some kiddos. And our February head count was two thousand ninety-two. We had sixty-nine students participating in running start and thirty-three are running start only. Heart also saw a small decrease of three FTE to forty point two one. Our sped count was three hundred and eighteen and there were three kids reportable for the dropout re-engagement program.
Three? We have come back.
And that, that's actually operated for, through ESD, so it's really based on the, the need of the kid. So sometimes we don't need kids to be re-engaged, so that number. Really fluctuates and that's money in, money out, so it's not something that we budget and need to hold a certain level of kids. It's we count the kids, get money and pass it on.
Question on that gravity, the head count, it says three for January, three for February, are those the same three?
Those kids do move quite often and oftentimes they're there and they just need a credit or two. And so you see in November, there were six students there, my hope is that. At least two, maybe three of them have graduated. And moved on.
Which I was hoping, like, six, four, three, three, maybe the three already moved on, they just got what they needed, the next three kids.
So this is just a visual of our K twelve FTE count, the current year is the red, that's not quite done. So. Working on projections for student enrollment, it's difficult because you can see we don't really have any friends here. The budget status report looks like it's next, the end of January, the fiscal year is forty-one point six seven percent of the year complete. And our expenditures are at forty-three and our revenues are at thirty-nine point five eight. So right on track. The all fund summary for January, general funds ending fund balance is just over one million capital projects at four point two. Debt service at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, ASB at five hundred and forty-three thousand and transportation vehicle at a hundred. So this paints a pretty clear picture while we're going through a budget process to reduce our budget. At the end of January, the breakdown of our fund balance was three hundred and seventy-one restricted for carryover. And six hundred and forty-eight restricted to local sub-fund. January is typically a lower month, we don't get the same amount of money per month for our state revenues. And January is one of the lowest months, we get the most money in July and August. As it's the, the new binding for the state, so that's when we get over twenty percent of our dollars. Yep, yep, and then we'll get a bump in April when we get our levy payment, that's a month that it always goes up, so.
Well, I have no questions, Lana, do you have any questions tonight?
No.
Okay, Grant, do you have any questions?
Just joined, so now, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jill. Right, and then we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
I just have a short report for you tonight, today, want to do a few celebrations, first of all, our kindergarteners celebrated the hundredth day of kindergarten. And you see two pictures here, one on the left was where they were having lots of fun, the other, they were trying to be a little bit more serious, but. All of the kids, I think we have eight different sections of kindergarten this year and every classroom is celebrating the hundredth day. They had Cheerio necklaces where they counted out a hundred Cheerios and made it in the necklaces. Many of the kids were counting by tens to put those necklaces together, yes, as you can see, they had crowns. They had, it was, it was a great week at the primary, they had the hundredth day of kindergarten and then they also had Valentine's Day the next day. So it was a great week to be part of kindergarten or part of primary. And I'm sure Bubba will tell us the same thing there. The other thing I just wanted to let you know is today, Mr. Dan Penn from the Chehalis Tribe was at our middle school. He was working with the Washington State History Students and talking to them about the Chehalis Tribe and the history of the tribe. So we welcomed him and it was great to see him over there.
Wonderful.
Also, we've been engaging in some learning walks, so Justin and Laura and Maggie and I with the.
Um, also, we've been uh engaging in some learning walks, uh, so Justin and Laura and my, Maggie and I with the principal and the assistant principal. And then um we've also invited the principal of the incoming. Students, so for instance, when we visited um the middle school, I'm sorry, yeah, well, I don't know how to describe it. Anyway, when we visited the middle school, we had those people that I just named, plus. Uh, Mike Smith came down and did a walk with us in the middle school too, so he can start to see what's going on in the middle school. And the same thing happened with um Will, he went down to Grand Mound and he did a walk at Grand Mound. And so we were able to go into classrooms, we saw a lot of great learning. Um, our teachers are doing amazing things with our kids, our kids are doing amazing work. Um, our entire s- team of staff members, I mean, just great things happening with our kids. Um, we saw a lot of students working in groups and actually engaged in thinking. And um not just sitting and listening to a teacher talk to them, but really being actively engaged in what, what the work uh or the activity was for the day. Um, kids being allowed to move around, so they weren't just sitting still. And Thomas, you and I have seen a lot of that, we've been doing some walking, so. Um, really good instruction that's happening in our buildings and a lot of celebrations that we had while we were walking through our buildings. We're going on a second round of learning walks in March and. The work that, when we're on these learning walks, um, we're going to be taking the information we pull from there and that'll inform the work that we will do next. Around professional development, around focus for our kids. Um, and just what do we need to do next? We need to be in there more than just once, so we'll. Keep hitting classrooms throughout the rest of the year before we sit down and make some plans. Um, then.
I, I had one question for you, so before we, um, so you're talking about when, when the principals go down. Do the principals um at closer to the end of the year? And they are, have they go down? And so if Mr. Smith comes down to the high school, or excuse me, to the middle school. He talks to all the eighth graders who are going to, to the high school. Does he or could he give him his expectations? At that?
So I, I'm not sure what's happened in the past, but I will tell you that we're talking about making that happen this year. So he'll be talking to the eighth graders prior to going in, and also we're learning, um, working to calibrate, you heard, starting to talk about there. If, if we have expectations in fifth grade, we want those expectations to. At least be considered about following through into sixth grade, right? We shouldn't be re-teaching and redoing. So, yes, we're working on that type of thing, the transitional work.
All right.
Our next is student progress, and this probably could be a whole conversation in and of itself, so I'm just going to share this with you and then. Um, the principals will be here to present next week, and I think Mike will talk more about this. Um, but second semester is well underway. Uh, I think it's really important to notice that we, or to take note that we have ninety percent of our students who passed their core classes, which was really good news. But um, one of the things that Mike and his team are really working on and actually Will and the middle school as well, they're looking at the. The failure rate of our students, and so um. So, three of the areas that were identified and are going to be a focus of the work of the team at the high school. Is that thirty-six percent of the students who failed, so not thirty-six percent of all of our students, but thirty-six percent of the students who failed, which was about. I think it was three hundred and thirty-one is the total number of students who failed a class. Um, the thirty-six percent of them were ninth graders, which is concerning because that's a large percent of ninth graders. Um, that are struggling. Uh, sixty-five percent of those students who failed were males. And sixty-two percent of the students who failed were received free and reduced lunch. So some areas where we need to focus our work and make sure that we're providing supports. Um, you know, there's, there's some questions we need to ask and the team's going to be doing work in that area. And like I said, Mike will explain a little bit more about that work next month.
That's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
That is a lot.
Well, remember, that's sixty-five percent.
To me, that's unacceptable. Well, I mean, you know, you see where I'm getting.
Yep.
Lana, it's concerning. Oh, no, it is concerning.
Yes.
Very much so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I wanted to update you on the budget process. So um, we've got the committee working and they're doing a great job. We have stakeholders from all of the different. Um, groups that would ha- that this uh, uh, budget. Reduction will impact. Um, I think you've heard me say it, there's teachers, there's students, there's. Uh, classified, there's maintenance, custodial, um, parents, community members, I mean, we, we have everybody sitting down and working together. We've met twice so far. The budget survey that we put out, we had eighty responses on the budget survey. From that budget survey, though, there were eighty responses. Some of those responses came in with more than one idea. So some of them, so total, we had a hundred and thirty ideas from the eighty responses.
Should I have got? One of those?
Um, you could have gotten one of them, yeah, I mean, it was sent out to everybody. Yep. And I'll, I'll show you where it was sent out, and then we had seventy, we had seventy budget items under review. And then uh thirty, so seventy, so when we looked at the hundred and thirty ideas, some of them were repeats. Um, some of them, uh, you know, like we had. A number of them, for example, that said that they really think that families should buy um school supplies. So that was maybe five or six times it was noted. So once we cleaned that all up, we had seventy budget items that were really solid budget, budget items that are now under review. We had thirty-five that were unquantifiable. For instance, um, let's turn off our lights. Turn it off like, really good idea, right? We know that's best practice. And it should save us money, but we don't know how much money that would save us. So it's, it's not quantifiable, so that went on to a list of unquantifiable. Um, the committee has seen all of the budget items and they've also seen the list of unquantifiable. They looked last week at that list and determined what the impacts would be if, if we um. Reduced or eliminated the, the seventy budget items that are under review. And um they found some that had positive impacts and some that had negative impacts, so there was two ways of looking at them. Um, and now, next time, they're going to see the, that list of seventy again, they will have the impacts all lined up. With exactly what did they, what did the committee see the impacts being? And now they're going to see the dollar amount if we reduce um each of the different items. Um, they have two more meetings left and, and that's to identify, those meetings is where they'll identify them. Um, one million dollars of reductions that we need.
Anything to add with that? You've been sitting through all those meetings?
Um, uh, the budget committee, they've been asking a lot of good questions, and Shauna's been chasing down. As I've been sitting in the back of the room, I'm, I'm there, I'm just observing, and uh, the one thing I can say is that our superintendent is doing a great job. Of holding focus on everyone in the room. You got like, like eight different tables, it was like speed dating, and they were moving around, signing different ideas onto a sheet, and then then. Ten minutes later, they had to move to the next table, they were looking at a different sheet with other ideas. And so I, I thought she did very well. And, and uh, we got lots of good feedback from that and uh, we're looking forward to the next meeting to attend. So, I think.
Well, I appreciate you being there. It's good to have you there watching and listening so you know what's going on and can share that piece out, so.
Lana, any questions about any of this?
No.
Yeah, Grant?
Thank you.
No, thank you, good information.
All right.
Uh, last thing is just some up to, upcoming events that you might be, want to be aware of, um. On Saturday night at five o'clock at Sweet Hall is a safe and sober auction. I hear that's an event that you don't want to miss, and that certainly supports our seniors and them having a safe. Event to attend on graduation night. Um, so if you have time and you want to join in, great event. Uh, March eleventh is the RFAN auction. It's not directly connected with our schools, but boy, they sure. Everything I've heard about them is they do a great job of supporting our community, so that's on Sweet Hall. I don't know what time that's at. Not sure, so I'm assuming six, seven, five, six, seven o'clock, um, but. Put it on your calendar and watch for the time if you're able to go. Um, then we have conferences, March twenty-eighth through thirty-first, and hard to believe, but spring break is just around the corner. And that's my update for tonight. And we have one more. Didn't I do?
We passed that. Superintendent report, and then at this time, uh. Yeah, we are now under new business, number eight. Um. The capital projects funding budget extension resolution.
The emotion.
Uh, I would like to get a motion. Uh, to approve this.
What are we, and I'm, I read this, but. I didn't understand what this was when I was reading.
So it's the, the thing that I started the meeting with about increasing our capacity to allow the project that was approved last month.
That, you guys hear Jill?
Okay.
So at, at the beginning of the meeting, she shared information, and then we had to take, then we took comments from the public. And now this is where you vote on the resolution that would allow us to increase the capacity of our budget to pay for the things.
That we approved.
That we.
That we approved, okay.
That makes sense, I say.
Okay.
I, I will make an emotion to approve it.
Okay, Thomas has made the motion. We have a second.
This is Grant, I'll second.
All right, um, do we have any discussion? No discussion, um. Is there any, uh, excuse me, um, I think a voice vote? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None? All right, so the motion passes. For the capital of, capital budget term, budget extension resolution. All right, uh, at this point in time, uh, we're moving on to number nine, public input. Anybody in the public uh want to address the board for items that were not on the agenda tonight?
Give me thirty seconds and I'll, I'll watch. We've had a couple of folks join since that I want to make sure. Okay, but I don't think anybody else.
We're waiting on that. Shauna, what is the eighth? The day of our next meeting? Eight March?
I mean.
Eight March? I keep the calendar at home.
It mirrors this month, February, March mirror each other, so.
Okay, so.
Eight twenty-two.
So the eighth and twenty-second, okay.
Nobody, okay, nobody.
Nobody? All right, but at this point in time, um.
We need to go to executive session.
Uh, we are going to be going into executive session, so the public part of this meeting.
Twenty-five minutes to.
Twenty-five minutes?
Do litigation and personnel.
Litigation and personnel. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At eight forty-five, we are coming out of executive session, I hit my gavel.
And now the meeting.
And that we're resuming the meeting?
Uh, now you're going to adjourn.
Now I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.